I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please proceed. I'd like to add that the minutes of the meeting are being taped and recorded for the aid of the preparation of those minutes. That being said, due to Mr. Wagner having to make an appearance at 6:00 for the conditional hearing and change an earlier meeting, earlier afterwards, I've got to make a small change in the agenda to address the issues that may involve his comments on it. This time, I'd like to get down to the Penn Township Planning Commission and address the Maladnor waiver request.
I think I forwarded letters to everyone involved and I'd like to request the waiver of the planning private access to three lots. And since last month, the last meeting was in the minutes that the is a public road, and the bottom part is a public road, and the top part is a private road, and the private road is also a public road. Do you know more about your topic?
Just trying to pose a question. If the board doesn't mind, I'll just go ahead and ask it for him. Last week, or last month, I'm sorry, at the supervisors' meeting, there was a statement made that the 33-foot right-of-way that was shown on a 1973 recorded plan where it left Rook Road and traversed northward was considered by the township as being a public road at the last month's meeting. My question and his question is, if that's the case, your ordinance and all both books say that for a lot to be a legal lot, it has to front a republic's drive or a private drive. This guy has both, touching his land, which was warranted to him when he bought it from Mr. Stoner. And I just posed a question to the board. If that's the case, why are we even talking about this? The man has a legal lot already. The other two people can travel on a 30-foot wide private road into their homes, and at least 30 more feet of this man's land, which happens to be directly over the 33-foot right-of-way that was approved by the '73 plan. The property line for the vacant house and the 33-legal right-of-way I showed on my plan are the same property, same line. Furthermore, the vacant house, which what we show on our plan is a Batumins parking lot, which is basically what it is, it's a little parking area, they have a Batumins driveway going up on their own land that services that. Now, granted, I'm not going to insult your intelligence, the paving isn't real wide in certain areas, he has to sort of drift on over into the private road to make the swing, but the majority of the McAdam and the little parking area that's there, it's not a driveway, is on that gentleman's land and fee. So if he's, if you call it a public road, then he can use that road to get in there as well. The only problem is, he has to trespass on this gentleman's land for about just a couple of feet.
Charlie, yes, I agree with maybe what you're saying there, but I know that that household and that etc. there with those people there, there's three on that private road at the present time. They've used that driveway ever since 1973 to get in that house.
It's not a driveway. The driveway comes in from Rook.
But they've used, if you're saying it's a public road, they've used the public road. If you say it's a private road, he's still used a private road. And so there's three on that private lane at the present time.
You said it's a public road. There's no requirement in your book for a public road, how many lots can be on it? I'm telling you, this man's land touches it in feet, Henry.
When your drawing says it's private, and the people have used it up there, boy, you didn't exclude them in that plan. You didn't say you couldn't use them. Your plan says private and also shows 50 foot in the township road ending up there where the township road don't even go. Your plan shows that, Charlie.
I want to be honest with you, Henry.
Your plan shows that, Charlie, does it not? Does your plan not show that?
Nobody at that table, Charlie.
Your plan has showed that.
Ever brought up this lot as being used in a private road, Henry. It's never brought me.
Your plan shows that, that the township road goes where it don't even go. And you admitted that last month at the meeting, that you knew where the township had run. And we got the original deed for it then, but your plan shows that the township goes somewhere.
Supervisors in that year had that plan told me to do that, Henry.
Well, supervisors told you. Why wasn't one of them?
That's right. So how can you even comment on that?
So I would dispute, by golly, I would question, by golly, that the supervisors told you to put that on there.
The problem was Benner's lot was essentially a no legal lot at the time we discovered the.
I'll let's listen.
I wish I never would have found that damn document, Henry, but I did my job, and look what it got me. Got me in a middle of a you-know-what storm.
And I really thought that I was going to be able to pave that when the time come to pave it, that it was a township road, or I found out that it wasn't. And so I couldn't do it.
Well, here's what bottom line, and this is what I see on the plan, and I think it weakens the township's position. I know that Mr. Wagner certainly would have a comment, but the 1973 plan approved by the supervisors said it was 33-foot right-of-way, and it's got the word legal on the plan, Henry. It's been sitting up there on record it over 21 years. You turn around and your lawyer turn around and say that it's a public road. I don't care if it's township, it's a public road. So all of a sudden, that leave right-of-way line becomes damn important to me.
Then why do you say it's a private road on the plan?
Because this discussion did come up back then.
You show a private right-of-way right out to the township road. You show it on the plan, Charlie.
Hey, my tip was a ringer for last month. When you said it was a public road, that gave what I consider this gentleman a way out. And I believe there's a judge in this land that'd agree with me.
So Mr. Wagner, by golly, go through this thing.
You can have, and I think we're talking semantics. A road can be open for public use and still be privately owned. Let me give you a specific example. Right now, in the borough of Bloomfield, if you go to the one end of town, there's a development called Lakeside Development, and there are probably 20-some homes on paved streets, sidewalks, and everything else. Those streets have never been dedicated. They're open to the public. The people who live there use them. They're back and forth. Anybody else, no matter where you're from, can drive through the development. But those streets have never been dedicated to the municipality.
So what would happen if there's a lot up there that somebody wants to build a house on now, and you're pressed at development? They want to build a house, come in here for a building permit. Would they be denied a building permit because that's a public road, but it's not a township road, even though your book doesn't say that? Your book says all you have to do is order on public road?
No, no. The question you asked was whether or not a road, because it's public, automatically makes it a road that belongs to the municipality. And there's a distinction between a private road that the public can use and a public road maintained and operated and owned by the municipality. Bloomfield Borough is the specific example. That's been there for decades. If you go to the other end of town, you could drive through Lakeside Development, and you've got paved streets or some potholes and so forth because there's no maintenance.
I know, well.
But it's that, those streets are still privately owned, even though the public uses them, because nobody followed through with the dedication to the township, in that case, to the borough, for the borough to take over. So you could have streets privately owned, open to the public.
But you didn't answer my question.
Well, I'm looking at a plan that says 20-foot wide stabilized private road. And according to this, Act 1, Consultants, Inc., certified this.
Well, I'm not saying that we can't do this. We'd have to have some, we'd have to bring a plan in to split this to 30 to 1, or 30 to 30. I know that. That's not my question. How did you want to go here? My question is simple. Yours of the vision and zoning book says that all lots must front on a public drive or a private drive. And when you said last week or the month that this was a public road, in my opinion, right that second, this lot became a valid lot in the township.
Let me go over that one more time. The use of the word "public road" is not synonymous with ownership by the municipality. A road can be.
I don't care about the municipality. I don't care about the municipality. You don't say that in your definition when it.
Your certification on this plan that was recorded certifies it's a 20.
It was a plan in 1973. It says it's a 33-foot legal right-of-way. Now, where's the legality of that?
Were you Act 1 when this is certified?
You bet I certified the plan.
20-foot wide stabilized private road, was that a correct certification?
I certified it based on the fact that we knew that there was record, recorded documentation of Rook Road stopped where our plan shows.
And there at the bottom, it says, existing pole to be relocated. That was not done? And were all the rights of ways here dedicated to the municipality?
He just totally confused me with that rhetoric you said about the.
I'm not trying to confuse. I'm looking at your plan that says 20-foot wide stabilized private road for access to these lots, and this plan is certified by Act 1 Consulting, Consultants, Inc., Civil Engineers, and this apparently was recorded and certified by the then-owner, Mr. Stoner. And it says 20-foot wide stabilized private road. Is that, is that wrong?
I think we're in a mess with this.
Is that wrong?
One quick question, I'm done.
Is that wrong?
No problem, Rich. If that, you know, that's an impasse. If this gentleman puts up a fence and blocks this man from coming out onto his property, what's the township stand on that? Because it's his land. He has the right to stop this man from coming onto his land. Because nowhere on that plan, which he keeps referring to, does it say that that guy had the right to use it. Nowhere. I want to know, if he blocks this man off, whoever he is, out to vacant, looks like the vacant a long time, and exercises his right to stop him from using that road, now he has a valid lot. To me, that's a civil matter. Is the township going to get in the middle of that one as well?
Not if it's between two, not if it's on a private road and involves two private people. We have no standing to get involved.
It sounds like it's the only way out of this mess, gentlemen, is to reduce the road down to two people. This man does not have a driveway there. His driveway comes in off Rook. This is a place just to park a couple of cars. McAdam area, not quite as big as this room, where he comes up the McAdam, which is actually on his land and fee, but he does have to swing over into the private road because of the radius, and he will pull in there, and he's in his own land. He's just going to block him from using that portion of the private road. He'll have to use his own land to get up there.
That's between you folks.
I'm asking you that if he does that, would that make his lot valid, based on that plan?
Charlie, that's going to be between you folks. You folks have to make the decision you feel is most appropriate and in the best interests of your respective clients. But by golly, when I look at a certified plan that was placed in the records of this county, and it's certified by you, and it says private road, and a pole is to be relocated on the plan, and we're sitting here 30 years later, that pole hasn't been relocated, and now you're saying that the road is public. I have problems with that.
You said the road is public.
No, no, no.
Excuse me. You said it.
No, no. You missed, again, it can be a private road used by the public. That doesn't make it a public road owned by the municipality.
Is that going to be reflected in your minutes as a revision of what you said last month? That's the question I have. This is ridiculous. I feel like I'm stuck in the mud here.
Charlie, it's your plan. You certified it.
This problem's not about the plan, Rich. It's about what you guys said last month.
No, no. The plan says it's a private road. Now, if you want to take what was said last month and use it some way to get yourself out of this, that's between you and your clients. That's up to you guys.
But I'm asking the question, if this happens between those gentlemen, and there's a fence up there with no trespass notice, and he no longer is using the private road, that means there's only two people using the private road at the time. Does that render this problem solved?
I don't know until it's presented.
What's that?
We don't know until it's presented. I'm not going to advise you what to do. That's up to you and your clients.
Okay.
The ultimate thing is, you would issue the building permit. And the public road you were talking about earlier, that had to be paved and the sidewalks and wherever that was by a lake, is there more than two houses on that public road, or is that just?
Oh, my God, there's 20-some.
Okay. That's a lot more, too. And I know there's a lot of controversy and contradictions in the past, and that's why we're asking for a waiver, see if that would solve this issue.
I understand it. But in '73, somebody filed a plan and said this is a private road, and there's a pole in the middle of the road, and it's going to be relocated. It hasn't been, and the roads remain private.
Okay. But there's still to be a waiver.
But nobody came back with another plan. Nobody changed what was recorded and certified and given to this township in 1973. I don't know who was on the board. I wasn't here. I was still in college then. But I don't know who did it, what the circumstances were, anything else. I just know that in 1973, somebody recorded a plan that said, there's a pole in the middle of this road, and it's going to.
That was not '73 plan.
Oh, whatever.
That's 2001.
And it's going to be removed. But it says it's a private road. Now, that's, they got approval based upon the certification that this is a private road. Because had they not said it was a private road, they'd had to pave it. So in order to save money not having to pave it to bring it up to township specifications, they shot in saying, we're going to use three lots off of this private road. That saved somebody a ton of money. Now someone's sliding in several years later, saying, let's get the fourth lot off of this private road. They wanted to take advantage of it when the plan was recorded. Now they're stuck with the advantage they gained then. Now, if they want to undo that in some way, shape, or form, that's up to Charlie and his client. That's where it started. And it comes here today, and I don't want to hear that it's what we're saying that's caused it. We didn't. And I don't think you did either.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, you're the victim, or you're stuck with this consequence. And I commend you guys to work it out as you deem appropriate. But the ordinance is four, you can't have four lots accessible with a private drive.
I wasn't that brought up in '01 when I had that plan unrecorded. No one mentioned that old farmhouse as being the fourth lot. No one mentioned it.
That's because I didn't believe he was using it, other than like I told you.
But it doesn't, Charlie. You know the.
He's got a driveway coming right along.
You know the ordinance doesn't say lot with a residential use. It says lot.
It was never mentioned in nothing in the 2001 plan. It never came up in any, sorry, Rich.
Are you going to sit here and tell me that you didn't read the ordinance and the former supervisor didn't know what the ordinance said?
I'm telling you, when I did the plan, in my opinion, that lot was not using the road. It's a pan, Joe Handle McAdam. It goes into, you can see, he paved it. The man that lived there paved this thing. It's on his property, goes up, and then the whole parking area is on his property. It's not on this man's land. But the problem is, as I've been honest, that when he comes around the radius, he's going to have to get his tires over his property line onto the private road.
I respect your opinion.
I'm just telling you.
I respectfully disagree.
I think we're just in impasse here. There's no sense even talking about that sort of.
We could put a fence up, and there's enough land there for him to have his own private lane without even going into.
That's up to you folks. That's up to you folks. We can't tell you what to do in order for you to comply with the ordinance. That's up to you to interpret it and commend accordingly.
That's pretty plain language to say.
People that aren't familiar with this, that was never brought up as a fourth lot. This thing just blew up recently. It was never brought up at the meeting in '01. And we could resolve it very easily. As far as moving the poles concerned, I told them in the meeting, the plan showed it being in the middle of a township road. I said, that's not my responsibility. If PPL grabbed, went along with me, that that's a township road, that's not your responsibility. And furthermore, we're going to have trouble getting a permit or permission from the neighbors to relocate the pole. I could only move it like two or three children. Charlie shot the raids this last week. We have room to move the pole. I talked to PPLs. They said, we can do that because that pole's got to be replaced within three or four years anyway. So we can relocate. My goal was to clean up that entrance. I've done this with a couple farms. They were a mess. And that place out there is a mess. Clean it up, make an attractive entrance down there. That was my goal. It would improve the appearance and make the thing more usable. And I could easily set it up that they have their own private driveway adjacent to the driveway that we have. And we could put a fence up very easily, blocking that.
Chuck, we've kicked this around for an awful long time. Last month at the meeting, Charlie admitted that the township road didn't go around there, but yet it shows on the plan that it is a township road. It goes on a township road. So how it got on the plan it's a township road and it isn't, and it's 50 foot and it's not there, I didn't have nothing to do with that. I wasn't here. The other supervisors and how it did. That's a certified plan, and somebody else put this down and verified. There's a 50-foot right-of-way here, and the township road ends a great distance away from where it does. And we had a mission last month that we know where it ends, exactly where it ends now. It's never changed. It never went around the bend. So you've got to take a look at your plan that you filed that said there's 50 foot. You can move the pole. Can you still get to 50 foot? Because you must encroach over Mr. Benner's land.
We won't need a 50 foot.
But if there's four, if there's four lots on it, which is still would remain four lots unless you work it out with your neighbors. Was that not a letter that I sent you, Mr. Maladnor, that the answer to this is a civil matter for you guys to work it out with your neighbors? Did I not send that letter to you? You asked me what the answer was. Did I not send you a letter like that?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And that is the answer then. That's still the answer now. You're hearing from Mr. Wagner. You guys need to resolve that problem out there. We didn't create it.
I guess the question that we have is if we do what we're talking about, putting a fence up, not allowing them on our private lane, that would knock them out of the picture. And we know they can't claim, you can't claim that as a fourth lot. Am I right?
I think Mr. Wagner tried to answer that, that that's a matter between you and them. I would love, Rich, to answer it again.
If you come to the board and present what you're attempting to do, and the board will take a look at it. Because I think you will agree with me. You wanted three, you wanted three lots off of a private lot so you didn't have to improve it, right? And if you didn't have to improve it and spend the money and dedicate it to the township, then you were stuck with three lots. Now it's coming back to bite a little bit. Because a decision was made back then.
I only had three lots until this was brought up recently, that old farmhouse made the fourth.
It's not the way it happened. Good God. There was never any talk about that lot in any meeting I attended. You people have designated the fourth lot. We haven't. We're just fighting. We want to know, now, does that plan have to go through the planning commission as well?
Depends upon what you're planning to do.
Well, he just told you. He's going to put a fence up and block the guy from using the so-called private road that you last month said was public. He's going to block it off completely with a fence, taking over the right of his land and fee that he was warranted when he bought it. That's what's going to happen. Does that have to go to the planning commission to show the supervisors that now there's only two people using the private road?
It's not a question of use. It's a question of access to lots. The ordinance says no more than three lots off of a private right-of-way. Doesn't say three usable lots, three lots with residents on it, three lots with buildings on it. It's three lots is the maximum. Beyond three, you got to pave.
Okay, that's really coming around third base, running backwards, but I guess we'll have to take it.
Charlie, I understand what you're saying, and it's the last comment I'm going to make. We'll move on to something else. The plan that was filed, was filed to avoid having to pave the streets with private access. On the plan, it says a 20-foot private road. We didn't put that on there. We didn't write in private right-of-way. You folks did. And now you're sitting here and somehow wanting to say the township is wrong because you guys put that on there.
No, we're saying you're wrong because there was never four lots ever approved. That lot on the side was never, ever approved to use the road. It was never even discussed at any meeting. The plan was to create three lots, 1, 2, and 3 to use the road. In fact, if you look at the note, it says that 1, 2, and 3 were the ones we're supposed to use the road. Don't say anything about this guy. I don't think that that's even arguable. It's obvious. It's on the plan. He just won't answer the question, you know, if you're going to do this.
We can't answer it because we don't see what you're giving us a generalization of what you're going to do. And if you do it.
I gave you a fact. You're just ignoring it.
No, no. I'm not ignoring it.
The plan says lots 1, 2, and 3 will be used. Now, the only thing they didn't do, they didn't enter a maintenance agreement. But it says lot 1, 2, and 3. Don't say anything about the guy on the side. Because he didn't use the road.
Thank you.
Okay. It's an impasse for me as anybody.
Okay. We've heard the argument. We heard our solicitor's advice. We have the recommendation of the planning commission here for the waiver request. We've reviewed. The Penn Township Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the board of supervisors to maintain the requirement of no more than three lots on a private road. I can make a motion that we concur with the recommendation of the planning board to maintain the requirement of no more than three lots on a private road. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Motion made to the second. All those in favor give their consent of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is so ordered. At the same time, while Solicitor Wagner's here, I know we got to leave here soon, and I'll get him out of here. We moved that planning commission up there. At this time, I'd like to take time to recognize the Chairman of the Board of the Planning Commission in regard to the comprehensive plan. They're reported on that, their comments on it, and where it's going from there. And at this time, I recognize chairmanship.
Okay, I'll just take a few seconds of your time to let the supervisors and the public know how the planning commission proceeded after the public hearing. We reviewed, Helen compiled the public comments. Planning Commission reviewed them. We decided that a lot of the questions that were unanswered in the public hearing, where we could, the planning commission is planning on addressing those questions that can be answered, like why we recommend a 2-acre lot. There's a reason for that. We're going to put this in a newsletter to go out to the public, ask Helen to put it on the website. On items that do not have concrete answers, like how can we increase business opportunities in Penn Township, Planning Commission would like to request the help of the residents to come to the planning commission meeting when we can sit down and go over ideas that are presented by the public. Planning Commission doesn't have any concrete ideas of how to attract business into Penn Township, unfortunately. It wasn't available, so we didn't recommend including it in the comprehensive plan.
This is a false.
Although we do feel they're valid questions in need pursuit. So we're going to ask the township residents to come to the planning commission, and the planning commission will spend time. If it need be, we'll recommend to the supervisors that they get a public citizens group together to help formulate ideas for attracting business into Penn Township. Since the comprehensive plan doesn't prevent us from making these advancements to the township in the near future, there's no need to include them in the comprehensive plan. The only changes we recommend in the comprehensive plan after. The only changes we recommend in the comprehensive plan after the meeting was verbiage on the police. What we had listed in there was a chief, a captain, and six policemen. We realized that this number is going to keep changing, so we recommended verbiage change. It says a captain or chief of police, captain, and other officers as needed. That's the only change that we made to the comprehensive plan. So we intend to pursue the public comments in the manner that we suggested. First of all, a newsletter to answer the recommendations that were questioned. Otherwise, we're going to get together with the public and hopefully come up with something for you that maybe you could use to help attract business and answer some of the other questions. So for the reasons stated, we're recommending you go ahead and review the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Comprehensive plan has been a long time in making, complying with our planning code, what we're required to do, updated. We've done partial instead of complete. Saved us a lot of money. We haven't changed the footprint of the township much. And like you said, there's an awful lot of things that were discussed at the hearing that are never put into a planning commission or into a comprehensive plan, but yet they should be addressed. I appreciate letting everybody know. We're going to make an effort to address those particular issues.
We're going to make an effort with the public.
With the public, yes. Okay. That being said, the planning commission, I mean, the comprehensive plan is the force. And I would like to make a recommendation that we allow Helen to advertise it for approval.
I'll second that.
Motion made to the second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered. You can advertise it, Helen, for next month, okay?
All righty.
We have that before I go into the solicitor's report. Is there anything that any other member has here before we get into recognizing the visitors that may involve or may have questions for Solicitor Wagner so that I can release him here and get him out of here before I ask for his report? Anything? Okay, hearing done, Rich. I'm going to ask for your solicitor's report for this one.
There is none. Everything we did was before tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want copies of the paper?
No, no, I may need them at some point. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. This time, we will go back to the recognition of visits.
Okay. Bob Johnson?
Not at this time. I come to see what happens next.
Linda Gausse? Mr. Gausse? Bob? Jody? Chuck, anything else?
Nothing.
Randy's left. Jesse Boyer?
Has there ever been any more contact with that outfit about the manufactured guns or ammunition or something?
Yes, there has. We got a letter back from them and they showed us they appreciated our interest and they left us know where they moved to a state in the south and they are setting up business in another state. That letter's here if you care to see it.
No, I just.
We just got that, what, this last?
Week or two.
Week or two it came in, Jeffs.
Thank you.
They were very responsive in their letter and very kind in making an inquiry, wanting to bring them here.
That's all I have.
Brian Peters?
Not at this time.
Andrew Brown?
The only questions I have are about complaints I filed. I filed two complaints. One was the house that burned down in Perks. I know last time I was here, you guys said sometime in September that you had until?
Tomorrow.
It was tomorrow, okay. The follow-up question on that is, I know you can't give me a solid answer, but how soon after that does removing it? You know, how long do you think it will be?
I asked Rich that question. He told me after tomorrow, if nothing's done, we are to cite them first and go in the process that way. Cite them that they're in violation. They'll have to go before the judge and explain why they haven't done it. And then it'll build up.
Usually 30 days, 30 days.
Okay.
It's been another month and then.
My follow-up question on that is, they've already been cited?
No, they have not been cited. No, they were sent a certified letter stating that they had to do this by the state.
Okay, that takes care of that. The other complaint I filed with the guy was two campers.
Want me to tell you that one too?
Yeah, go ahead, Helen.
Okay. That is, going back to the zoning officer for, he sent him a letter saying he was in violation. The gentleman sent a, the renter or, I'm assuming he's renting, isn't he? The renter is in an application explaining everything. It was denied. The homeowner came in, or the property owner came in and wants to, said he does not wish the gentleman there and it has to go back to this zoning officer for further actions through him.
So they'll deny his request?
That's my follow-up question was. Whoever they have, this guy that's there, he has no, like, I know you're saying he's renting, but there's no, like, official documentation that he's renting. You know, there's no agreement, you know, nothing. It's a verbal thing. The other question I have is, would you answer it for me? Is he going to be getting approved to keep it there?
No, it's denied.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then they follow through with that with another letter saying it's been denied, you have to vacate.
Okay. I think that's it.
Mr. Serenani, he's on later on. Charlie left.
I apologize for my absence last month. In July, I had an event in July in a family situation. I'll update all information as of the end of August. I don't get the September data until usually the first week of October. But if there are any questions on what I'm presenting, please let me know. Obviously, the breakdowns come at the end of year. We would like to ask, there was, I think, $14,000 and change budgeted for the contribution to Dunkin' Amets. We're at the point in the year, we have a pretty good six months with the Wheatfield Township contribution and our subscription revenue coming in. And then, starting from September till pretty much February, funds are challenging at best. We also have, on that same token, ambulance, 29th to 2008 ambulance, the GMC medium duty, has been at Hoover Brothers in Elliottsburg for about two and a half weeks. It's been out of service probably monthly since almost we got it. It's been nothing but trouble and we're in a situation where we owe more than it's worth. So the warranty was very brief on that vehicle because of being used as an emergency vehicle. We had, what we found were the injectors, the eight injectors in the vehicle were not operating properly. And injectors, if anyone knows anything about vehicles, because I certainly didn't, are not cheap. We're looking at probably $6,000 for that repair between the injectors, the labor, and what they term the fast fuel system. Because apparently with that chassis, there's a known issue, not a recall issue, but a known issue with fuel delivery from the tank into the engine. It's let us sit, fortunately not with any critical patients, but it's let us sit many times and we finally think we've diagnosed or we think they've diagnosed the specific issue with it. So that's going to be a big chunk of money that we weren't prepared to spend. Hopefully, this money that's budgeted by Penn Township if released tonight, we can put toward that repair and get that vehicle back. Hopefully tomorrow is the pick-up date. As always, if there's anything that you require of us or anything we can do for you, we appreciate your support as well as the support of the residents. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Greg.
I guess not?
I work with building inspection underwriters. I think I interviewed with you guys about maybe a month, six weeks ago for services. I understand you may be voting very soon. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Leroy? And Byron?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, did I miss anyone? I don't think so. I'll sit here.
Okay, we have before you the invoices and expenditures for approval or rejection. Any comment by either one of the supervisors or our secretary that's prepared these at the present time until we fulfill our position?
The only thing is, is under the liquid fuels, you'll see two checks, one's for the paving project and one's for the E3 oil.
Okay.
Make a motion, the orders be drawn, the bills be paid.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered. Before you, the treasurer's report?
Okay, before we get involved, a couple things in front of it. I'm asking permission to pay Geisinger medical bill by ACH like we did Capital Blue Cross. Do that, the due date on the bill is the first of the month. And sometimes that gets really close.
Okay.
Make a motion, we allow Helen to pay Geisinger medical by ACH.
I second a motion. Motion made to the second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered.
Okay, we have four CDs due. One capital reserve, three general funds. The capital reserve is $143,500. Two capital reserves, I'm sorry, two of the general funds are $103,67 and change. And then the third, fourth one would be $54,000. Right now, they're at Landisburg. I would recommend moving them to Mifflin Town. I just need to know what, if you want a six-month or a 12-month.
Since this money has not been needed in the past and I don't know of any major expense coming in the near future, I would recommend that these CDs be moved to Mifflin Town for a 12-month period to get the better interest rate.
Is that a recommendation or a motion?
That will be in motion.
I'll second the motion.
No one has any other?
Yes, you regularly move, second. We move them to Mifflin Town for the higher interest rate, which is considerable in today's standards for where we're at. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered.
Now you have the treasurer's report.
Okay, you have before you the treasurer's report for rejection or approval?
Nothing unusual, Helen?
No, I will be moving money from our Oars Town Bank over to our pligot, probably about $20,000 of that, just to keep more money in the pligot where most of the bills come from.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, the treasurer's report be accepted, subject to audit.
I'll second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered.
Okay. I know Craig made his appeal. Normally, in October, we pay the second portion of the donation for the Dunkin' Fire Company. That's $25,000. What's your wish? This is normally what goes into their capital reserve.
Are you talking Dunkin' Fire Company?
Yes, Dunkin' Fire Company. Normally, we pay them in November.
I'll make a motion that we go with. We've done customarily in the past and we pay them their second payment. Helen, it goes in their capital reserve.
All right.
So $25,000.
I'll second that.
Motion made to the second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered. Okay.
That's all I have unless you want to address Craig's request. Unless you want to address Craig's request.
Well, Greg, is it okay with you if we follow suit?
We'll make it work. We do have a line of credit that we've been successful in paying down, not to zero, but to much less than the maximum as it was about a year and a half ago. So we can use that, you know, to cover that bill until November. At minimum interest.
Take a hard look at everything here. Maybe we'll make that next month.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the minutes for August 21st and August 28th before the board for approval or rejection. What's your wish, the board?
Make a motion that we table those minutes. There were numerous corrections and last-minute.
Changes.
Changes that needed to be made and with power outage today, I would make a motion that we table them.
Okay, motion was made to table. For further review, do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Motion made to the second. All those in favor give their consent by saying aye. Aye's have it, so ordered. Okay, at this time, we have the highway report. For those of you taking notice out here, we took a couple days and we patched parking lot out here, all the cracks and sealed everything up out here. We had some striping paint out here. And we've had something out there before we used it. With the amount of a pad, we pre-stripped the parking lots and the parking spaces out here for the rec board out here. So we gave some time out there and we also have spent some tar and chip out on Butcher Shop Road. Chipped the roads since last month, you know, and got that project completed and done. We've got large amounts of places where we were starting to get small cracks, the schoolhouse down there, that we sealed them up in order to prolong the use of that road down there before we get it to the point that it really breaks up. We've had a couple breakdowns. We had a Sterling truck out here that quit one day. And try as we may, everything checked out okay with some Murray motors. We towed it, got it started, we had a diesel put it to them. And they had to put it on a computer because it ended up being the starter. And since it's a Sterling, you don't make them parts while you take them back to where they come from. So we had new starter foot on it, $4,000, $8,000. We have, we made a repair on the splitter on the air valve that was replaced, we wanted to get inspected, need replaced. So we've made that. We replaced the culvert on Holman Drive, which has totally collapsed and the road is going down. And that's in and that will soon be sealed up and be, give it a time to settle a little bit. And this, we got that in before the fiber optics is going in there to be sowed in the ground. So they will now be boring under it instead of us having to dig down on top of them. So I got one other culvert that hopefully on Sawmill will get it exchanged or get it done. They're anticipating have to drill under it instead of us having to dig on top of that fiber optics. So township roads out here at the present time, and we're out here mowing them again for the second time. We're doing back at Dunkin' first. We usually get the cove first. We're working out of Dunkin', mowing the roads out here. And we'll be moving down to the cove for the second mowing along the roads down there. I've answered numerous complaints. I got three driveway permits to take a look at tomorrow for site distance to verify that they're okay before they can be issued. We have one driveway permit out here that was paved and brought out to the road and the gentleman was unaware that there was a requirement for that fee. Went out and talked to him, was very kind and very nice about it. Come in and picked up his permit. He didn't do anything wrong or indecent. I talked to the pavers, he wasn't home. And I made sure that the necessary swale and et cetera going back there was proper. So that was a complaint we had in here that we had to go out and take care of. So I want everybody to know that that particular one was taken care of. We have a hedge out on Linton Hill that's on the Wheatfield Township side that the neighbors are complaining about. And I've tried twice to get in to see the people, see whether they'll even let us trim it or whether they'll trim it because it is our requirement regardless of which side it is to maintain the site distance coming out on a township road, on a state road. So I haven't got that object done yet. But we have a driveway out here that needs a little bit of attention from rain, dirt when coming down on Faculty Road. We're going out to do something about that. We hope in the very near future to get out here to Gambers Road and fix that gully down across there that's been there for so long prior to the bridge being done down here when we're going to get some heavy traffic on that or a different situation. That's still in process and I think we haven't heard anything from anybody if there's any time change in that when we're going to do that. I am anxious to hear. I am anxious to hear from the state when they're going to line it, stripe it, and put the signs up like they said they would. So, we haven't heard anything from Pendon anymore on, after the other meetings that we've had on that way.
No.
No, okay. Now, that's all I have for the highway report, and I will say that we've got Trump suspected, gone over the best of everything that we can, we've looked them over, getting, anticipating on a hard winter. So, I believe what the Almanac says, when everybody says, we're going to need them for a lot of snowfall this year. We do have one township employee, I'd like to remark that Steve came down very sick, was in the hospital the other day, couldn't swallow, couldn't drink, couldn't breathe hardly. He's home at the present time, and so we took the opportunity, take the other man, put him in to get the township roof, and fell an opportunity. Hope he's back Monday, but he thinks he has to go in for some x-rays, are not sure what's wrong with him. So, that being said, we have the, we have our part timer that will fill in until he's back, he's back to, back to work. So, if anybody misses Steve out there with Tom, why, that's a reason why. Tough to get some employees still to go to the doctors. But nevertheless, I wanted to make those comments, wishing well. That's all I have underneath the highway report. You have before you the zoning report. Any comments on the zoning report? Okay, hearing none. Sewage enforcement officer report.
He did a couple probes and probes out there. Out for two in Oaks Drive. Also, under sewage, we have holding tank agreement for renewal for Mr. Wright's holding tank out on New Blooms.
Lee, the only thing that I have to offer with it, thanks for bringing it back in and following up with it like you always do. I was a little bit concerned about this portion of it that we asked from your supplier, and we talked to Slisther Wagler here early tonight, and Rich says, hey, nothing wrong with it, but please, they have to sign this.
I'm using the same guy you used last time, he goes to the secretary, and she says, oh, we don't do that, we do this.
Well, that was Rich's, that was Rich's request, was it not, like, I want to say, please sign that. So, I don't have any making, any trouble making a renewal for a motion to renew your permit, et cetera, they're subject to that, and
I'll take it back over.
Sure, yeah, that's all, that's all he asked, and I questioned it, but didn't know which way we were, so when he came in here tonight, Rich said, please get him to do it.
I'll take it back over.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we grant Lee Wright his renewal on his holding tank out there for his business, and subject to following through with that in Slisther Wagler's report. Formal motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent with saying on. I have it so ordered.
The second thing you have under the sewage enforcement officer is a request by Mr. Sirani to have a portage on at Rudy Mike's.
Be honest with you, I wish I never saw that request.
You're asking questions.
We got the same situation here that this gentleman has out there that's required to have a holding tank for his business. You don't have the adequate place for sewage facilities, and that's what you have down there. Peg John, you know, that's, that's one of the things, the Lions Club had to put one in up here, we have other places out there, you have to follow through, at least with the holding tank, if you don't have, if you don't have facilities or a spot there for, you have to have that holding tank there in agreement to pump it out. So, I would, I would ask, you know, in regards to that, I'll let the other members on the board say, but that's been customary in regards to that, that, for the business, that there's not a portability there. We've been through this before. Any, any questions, or?
Well, the only thing I have is that the property's still for sale, so a whole, job Johnny would only be a temporary situation until the property's sold, and then there would be bathroom facility, you know, for the shop there then.
Well, and the other thing of it is, I'd like to remark that if you want to open a business like that, you can ask Helen here, there is requirements within our
Zoning.
Our zoning that says that if you have that business there, that you have to have worse facilities in it, that has to be there. So, either, either way, we can't issue your permit or allow that to happen down there until that's provided. Now, that's, that's a twofold purpose there, that that has to take place, nuts. So, unless the other two supervisors wish to waive that requirement or allow that to happen.
There is no water in that.
What, would you put in the holding tank?
Well, there may not be any water in there, that's part of your problem, that's a requirement that you have to have those facilities in there for a public place. We've been through this with other places and other things, and if it isn't there, you have to provide something there. Now, I know, I know in the past, way, way back when, before we had zoning and et cetera, you had the business there, and you had your mother's place where you could go over there and use that.
Right.
And that, that worked for that at that time, but that don't work for that now. I hate to tell you that, but you, that, that's the way.
That's no problem, you can just kind of get business into the township. This is part of your comprehensive plan.
You know, so that's, that's
I'm the interested party in the store, if I could interrupt.
What's that?
I'm the interested party in the
That's Mr. Sirani.
System there, and my whole intent going here is that it provides, it really provides what I need in the community that I'm looking for, but I have a big risk that, I know they're selling the building. I know in this market, it's going to take them at least a year, if not two years, to sell it. And if you just do math, that isn't worth their while nor mine to install something that costly for a business that I'm running only on weekends. It's the reason I spent the money for another permit to come here and to address the issue and hope for a variance, based upon the fact that I'm only open two days a week, my traffic volume is so light, it's almost ridiculous, and it provides for everything that your ordinance requires, safe, proper disposal of the sewage and septic from the premises. I met all those requirements and demonstrated that, and I, I realize I'm going to be there for a year, year and a half, and that building's going to be sold. Who's ever going to buy it probably is buying it not to rent back to me, but to do something on their own. Likely, I'm surprised, Ford Dodge already hasn't taken the property over. But as a new business owner, my intent isn't to go in there, sit down and retire, my intent is to grow, and y'all seem very familiar with the building, there's not really a lot of room to grow in there. So, I mean, it's something that if we do this, I expect to be out within, realistically, within a year, I'm hunting for another location, and within two years, I better found it or, or I'm gone. So, you know, with those, you know, with that in mind, if somebody would agree that it's not a bad idea to have a business there that's already set up for it, to improve the community, I mean, really, the, my traffic volume's going to be less than twenty cars a day on Saturday and Sunday. The only time you'll see me there during the weekdays is when I'm there doing some cleaning, bringing my inventory in. You can even see on my applications, I don't anticipate more than three gallons going into this per day, and even that's a stretch. I'd put even money on less than ten gallons a week going into this thing that I'm paying for. But it boils down to the money. It's just isn't feasible to put that in for that location, and, you know, I realize there's requirements have to be met, but the purpose of the ordinance is to provide sanitation and non-nuance in the, in the community. That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing to address the problem. And I'd ask that you give that some consideration so that I can have a business there, the property owners can have something going there, and it does encourage the sale of the property with somebody in there.
Really, at this time, how we can do that because of the denial, the same thing at so many other places, very similar.
What other similar places are there? I mean, it's kind of unique there, it's, really, my attraction to it is it's unique, it's not a strip mall.
Okay.
It looks like it looks like a little shack, even if somebody tells me I look like an old general store sitting there.
I believe this is also an OSHA concern, this is not just a township ruling, or we're not trying to be the bad guys here, and this, these are things that we need to follow from OSHA.
Well, OSHA's something new, we have the DEP permit filed through Lenny Sizer's recommendation, Helen, that I was required to do it. OSHA has no interest in this whatsoever, to my knowledge. OSHA's Occupational Safety and Health Administration, that governs employment. I'm a sole proprietor, I really don't have any employees.
I think if you come in the township, take a look, we can show you the information where those requirements are there, for worse basins or facilities inside. They're there.
In a public building.
For a public building, yes.
Henry, if, if the property was owned by the same person that owns the house, if it was attached to the house, then that, that would be one property, the business, it would be like a, it would be like a business, a home-oriented business? Is that what you're saying? I don't know what you are saying. What did you want? What do you want? I mean, what does the, what is it that you want? I don't know what you want.
No.
Like, is there storage coming into the area? You have storage almost there now, I guess?
No, not, not, not that I know of, in the near future.
You'll be coming up there?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Because that would, with the Kinkora plant, that question was already brought up because of Ford Dodge, why they were not made connect to the Kinkora plant. They would have to go underneath the state road, being Cove Road, in order to connect, plus they are too far, the distance is too far to make them connect, and this property would be the same, they're outside of those parameters to make them connect to the Kinkora plant. So, it would not, they would not be required to connect to the public sewer.
But if the shore provided for them, they will have to hook on to them.
But I don't, I don't see that coming
Yes.
in the near future. Not to say that it couldn't, but there's been no discussion.
It's the zoning ordinance that requires septic and water
Yes.
for a business. The UCC backs that up on what they have to have for as far as potable water and toilet facilities.
Who's the UCC?
Uniform Construction Code.
Some of those things, we didn't generate, we can't get around.
Sure.
So, I would urge you to come in and take a look, and get all that information, and you'll take a look at, and you'll see where we stand. I still feel that
I felt that I did inform myself properly, I've just seen that it is in other locations in the township, there is use of that, so I didn't think
We thought we had a permit.
You said what?
We thought that's why we went ahead with the expense.
The tank, the portage on.
Yeah, we, we thought, you know.
I've seen them on other locations.
That's why we
Now, maybe they're temporary, and they're just building a holding tank, but
Could you cite where you've seen them?
Not offhand, I can't. I mean, I, I really don't.
Maybe it's special events or whatnot, but they're, they're hard to get there to put permit there for a business.
Like at the winery, that's not permanent, that?
Winery.
Does Bill have a portage on up there?
Never been there, I don't know. Does he have a portage on there? Someone saying he has a portage on back there for his business? If, if, if that's so, if someone's saying that you have that, it will be checked into.
I know when he had his special things going on, not the dinners.
I know when he had his special events, when he opened up, he had one there.
Yes.
And I thought it was one of those, if he had permit, that he came and went, then it's gone. If there's one back there, I haven't been back there for
I haven't been back in a while.
Since, since the opening.
First opened.
So, is there a variance? Can we go for a variance then, for extenuating, since the property's for sale, like Mike says?
It'd be that section in the zoning ordinance, that it requires it.
You ought to become awash.
I could.
That gives you a round, it?
That would.
No, it won't.
No, it won't. I'd go to say, not, not, not suggest. Okay, big article in the Langston County paper about what they had to comply with, they have to comply with all sewage facilities, the Storage Facilities Act, the state PA, same as anybody else there, not at them. And many, many people contrary to that may think that they are, but they're not. They must comply. And well, not correctly.
Yes, correct.
Thank you for standing behind me on that one. That is a fact.
I just had that discussion today.
Yep, yes, I just read a big article about that particular one, yes. I would urge you to come in, take a look at that, decide at it, see what you want. If you want to pursue it further, but at the present time, it is my feelings that, that we need to comply and be uniform, but, you know, I kind of feel that it's totally unfair to, to say that we're going to do that, because if that was the case, Lee Wright wouldn't be having a holding tank out there, he'd be having a portage out there, would you not like?
Be honest with you, I like the holding tank a lot better than the portage on.
That's correct.
But you have bathroom facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, you're using the holding tank for your storage from the bathrooms?
Yes.
We don't have a bathroom.
No, but there was a requirement for your business peg.
Which we don't have.
But you don't have what?
We don't have a bathroom, we don't have any running water, you're saying.
That's okay, but there's a requirement, if you're going to open a business like that, that you install one.
And if it were, and you said if it is a, even a home-oriented business, you would still have to have
Water, water and sewer there, washing facilities.
You couldn't use the home, then?
What's that?
You couldn't use the home for the water and storage.
She's asking if you can use the home next to it for the sewage for the shop.
Okay, is it separate deep, separate people, you're going to have the public going into somebody's home?
No.
To go to the bathroom?
No.
But you want to know whether you can use that separate
Like a home-oriented business, say it was a, a beauty shop or something like that. It, it's a home-oriented business, or just say the person that lived there had their, had the business.
She's just talking about business, have our home, home occupation, our whole business.
Say that the person who was running the shop lived in the home. It's all in one deed to say, and it's a commercial property, and I pay commercial taxes. If you're saying I can't have a commercial business there, is that what it is?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if you're going to have the business there, you have the requirement to have the worst facility and disposal of your, you're sure, you're required to have that in the building.
And if it were a home-oriented business?
Well, if it was a home-oriented business, and in a home where someone's living, it surely would have facilities in it.
In the home.
In the home, sure. Most homes, you would have a bathroom there that you would use.
Okay, we can check into that.
Okay, I would urge you to, you know, pursue that a hundred percent, please. Okay.
You're going to make a motion on this?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the request for the portage on at the present time be denied, according to the ordinances that we have in place and requirements that we feel are necessary or are required by law.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent with saying on. I have it so ordered. Penn Township Park and Rec Board report before you.
You have my report, just a couple quick things. We're having our annual Halloween party October 26th from six to eight P M., and we're looking at another big success for that. And I wanted to thank Lee Wright for donating the pumpkins for that. And I'll get together with you for the delivery. And just one other quick thing, as far as Jim Renner, he has had a decline in his health, and I continue to go over and help take care of him and see him and get him what he needs, or, so if we could give him a phone call or send him a card, or just let him know that we're thinking about him. I'm picking him up and bringing him to our park vibration meetings, so he still feels like he's a part and he's still contributing. That's it.
Okay, I see you have in here a request that you'd like to buy stove.
We were going to hold off on
You're going to hold off on that?
Yes.
Okay. And the stove out here at the kitchen, when kids have a use, like that, like to compliment you, like, oh, I'm going for the senior dinners, I understand that that's getting large and growing.
Yes, I start out at four people, and we're up to between forty-three and forty-five now.
And so, I'd like to compliment the Rec Board for doing that. We'll say today, we lost our power out here somewhere, there's a shortage in the pole going underground to the building out here, sure is everything out, killed everything here today. Thought Helen was going to have to take everything Thought Helen was going to have to take everything home to get it typed out or transferred, printed out onto her computer. They finally got it back on, so. The, uh, I got a job with the backhoe out here to dig up, to see how much damage it done, the wiring down there, smoke come up out of the ground. So, somewhere in the underground buried cable, we got a problem out here, shorted everything out.
This cable goes to electrical shed in the concession stand.
Concession stand. Not a big heavy user at the present time, you're just not going to have no lights or anything in the bathroom. We'll get on that just as quick as we can. Penn Township Municipal Authority.
Municipal Authority just had one question for the board. Morrison Headquarters, were they ever given an occupancy permit for the building that they have already built on top of that hill?
No.
Thank you. I will relay that back to the Municipal Authority. That's all I have.
Okay. Secretary's report, Helen?
Oh, yes.
Your turn.
Copier quotes. Cannon was able to give us a better price, uh, for that, and I did check into the Conica that was offered for sale for us. And I, and it, this model went obsolete December of last year. So we'd be in the same position as we are now if, uh, something went out and they couldn't replace the part. And also, they will not give us a maintenance agreement, because it is obsolete. So it's per hour, trip charge and, uh, price of whatever they have to fix. With that said, you guys, um, have to decide lease or purchase. And Cannon is actually below price for both. We figured out with the, um, lease option with Cannon and the, uh, maintenance, it would come to around five thousand four hundred.
And that's sixty miles.
Yes, versus the sixty-two forty-five with purchase price and maintenance.
Your, uh, CD gave me says four thousand four hundred.
Yes, we, uh, had it, I didn't get to write yours, so it's like this. Five thousand...
Four hundred.
Five thousand four.
Yes.
Thousand four.
Not four hundred.
I'm sorry. That's misspoke. I'd like to lease, but it's up to you guys.
I took a look at the, the numbers here today, and that is the best option that they have there with it. They provide all the toner and all the stuff that you need and, and take care of that.
And they take our copier.
They take the old copier.
And they take the old copier.
At no charge.
No charge, okay.
I move that we lease the copier.
Okay, motion made.
Kevin?
Uh, I thought we were going to decide on lease first and then copier.
Lease or however you wish to do it.
Okay, I move that we lease the Cannon copier.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. I will offer one thing, looking at, uh, looking at some of these quotes on there, if anybody's looking for a good, uh, something that you want to make a career out of, on obsolete repairs, on obsolete equipment, hundred and eighty dollars an hour they charge.
Plus the trip charge.
Plus the trip charge.
And any...
Two hundred dollars an hour, almost, but, uh, I, I just find that astronomical, that, that that's what the repair cost for copiers. That was the quote. We're working on that, where the obsolete equipment would be at.
What company's that?
Huh? Cannon. Oh, which one was the obsolete? Conica. Yeah. But that was for an obsolete one, not a...
Yeah, that, that's obsolete equipment, that's what they charge you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I ask, who are we purchasing this copier through?
We're leasing it through Cannon.
Yep, but what business? Is it a Cannon business and who owns the business?
Linda?
It's Cannon Corporate. I work directly for Cannon. We're the main factor. We've had, um, Penn Township as a client for many, many years, as our, our prior company name was Ose, which is the name on the equipment that we have. We've had for, um, about ten years. Normal life on the unit is about seven, but you've gotten ten good years out of it. Cannon purchased Ose, so now we have Cannon equipment that's available, and, uh, we've had some extremely low pricing available to upgrade Ose equipment, especially the ones that have become obsolete.
Who is your office local?
Uh, mechanics for it.
Yeah, we did go out for, um, quotes on that, Brian. We did go out with quotes.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Uh, UCC?
Yes.
Okay, trying to look at taking another, um, UCC inspector on board, is what we're required to do. We've had interviews with numerous people, spend a lot of time, take a look at them, apples for apples. Look at their costs, the comparisons, and, uh, not everybody submits everything, uh, on the same rates or the same thing for certain things, but you have to take a look at them to see what's high and what's low that they balance out. At the present time, we have, uh, we have one person here that's considerably lower. Talked to him today, one other problem, one question I had in regards to the swimming pool charge. They're willing to, uh, take that charge, because you have small inflatable poles, anything over two foot of water, we have to have UCC code requirement. Even if it's plugged in, you know, it's a ground fault, so you got those little small poles, you got above ground poles, and you got large poles, that people put in, uh, in the ground. So he agreed for that fee. I thought it was a little bit high, that he would give us a breakdown on, uh, a three-tier breakdown for those three different types of poles. We've taken a look at everything else there. At the present time, there is one that's lower than anybody else, and not much over what we've been paying in the past with Glace. So that's before the board supervisors, you've seen those proposals there, you've all had it before there?
She hasn't seen the spreadsheet, Brian, has she?
Oh, it might be you all have my copy. There's the spreadsheet, I'm sorry, it's easy.
Ran out of time to copy it.
Need a new copy.
Didn't need to lose three hours of power either.
Huh? No. The increase from what we had on the same as the basis was, uh, reviewing our inspections in the past from Glace was five forty-five...
For a stick-built house.
Yeah, for a stick-built house, and that's what we based all this on. Tried to make sure in the interviews that everybody knew exactly what we had in mind, apple to apples, uh, nothing was excluded. At the present time, the increase from five forty-five for the same thing that you really got in the past, goes to six forty. And I understand that that's five forty-five to six forty, and roughly, you know, you're looking there, ninety-five dollars, you know what I'm saying? The, that happens to be Panone. We have, I believe, BUI here tonight. And I really appreciate your interest. You do this for the, for the county, for the called, and since we have different things, I think it ought to be noted that you were willing to work with us, by golly, with what we have up here, that it would be two different charges for that. And of course, the second in line for this would have been eight twenty-five with you people. So, uh, and first capital engineering was a thousand one hundred thirty-seven, and MDIA was seven forty. So, uh, that is, uh, that was, that was the number to come out there for the, the same equal. So, all that being said, what is the wish of the board? We, we need to have this done by the end of the year. If you wish to table for review, you got one more month. Has to be done.
I don't see any need to table it, I mean, you have the figures before us of the budget coming up, so I'll make a motion that we award the UCC contract to Panone.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, so order. I really appreciate your, your effort. You, you, you made the second best presentation.
And you got the second best out. If I don't leave you to the outfit, I have nothing to say about that.
Okay, yeah, stay in touch with us. You have over the years.
I will do that. I'm going to grab a cookie on the way.
Oh, you, you do that.
My trip wasn't for that, but...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Traffic signal maintenance contract, Helen?
Okay, yes, um, did you get the email I sent you?
Yes.
Will there, will there be a follow-up when pricing is on there?
Yes, I'll follow up on that. The traffic signal is supposed to be operational at the end of October. There's a thirty-day test period. We do not have to have a maintenance contract until after that thirty-day test period. But I'm requesting to go out for quotes for the contracts. And when I do the quotes, it will be, let's see, October, November, well, at least December and next year. Rest of this year and next year. I just need permission.
We'd like to add, to Helen, that we did take a look at, is what we were looking at for electric bill, and we used Marysville down here for comparison. They claim that theirs is like twenty-four dollars a month.
Twenty-five, average.
Twenty-five dollars a month, Stanley, that's what they claim that they cost them.
That's minimal, basically.
Huh?
That's minimal, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I, you know, I, I thought maybe that it would be more extravagant than that, you know, I guess these LEDs work pretty cheap for this new, new stuff works a lot better than what I thought it was going to. So let's hope...
Henry, I still have to import on, uh, for my sign lighting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You hook that up, okay.
Yeah, I, I've talked to Penn Dot, Stanley, we're, we're, we're hooking it to that end light out there for the power source.
So when you see the bill go up point five, you know what happened?
I know what happened.
Yeah, we need a motion here, please, for, uh, Helen to advertise for the maintenance contract.
Is it advertised here, just?
We're...
Well, probably quotes. What I was told last year was it about five thousand, so that'd be under the quote criteria?
Yeah, all right, so I move we, uh, well, Helen, they go for quotes on the maintenance contract for the traffic signal.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye. Eyes have it, so order.
Byron, you want the cost of installation, correct?
Equipment and installation, per unit.
Okay. Police report, I mean, that's your report, excuse me.
Uh, yeah, I got a couple more things. November, December meetings. Right now, they're scheduled for November twenty-seventh and December twenty-sixth. That's the day before Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas. Do you wish to change those dates?
They're, 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 they're fine with me if the rest of the board got complexion, let them...
Fine by me.
Okay.
Okay. Let them stand as proof, Helen, thank you.
Um, the next thing I had is the Humane Society. We got our last bill that's being paid. The police and the dog catcher has eleven hundred dollars still left in their, their portion of it. The residents are down to sixteen dollars left, so no more cats or anything like that has to come in. I wanted to let you know that unless you wanted to authorize more money for that. I split the amount down in the middle.
Do I hear a suggestion from the board to let it ride or appropriate more?
I don't think we need a motion, let it ride, do we?
Okay.
Okay. And I'm going to ask for, to close the office next Monday at noon, so I can mail the newsletters. Uh, this is the thirtieth. I'm going to ask for a half day at noon on the fourth, for sanity, and my birthday off on the eleventh. If that's okay with you guys. I'm trying to use up my leave. You don't want the, uh, other choice of not, me not using the leave. You don't realize how much I have.
I don't have any problem with that, Helen.
Okay.
It's with your board, no?
Okay. So the eleventh will be a full day, and the Monday and Friday will be half-days next week.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have for me, at this point.
Now, we have the, uh, the, uh, police report.
Yeah, the airport.
Just wants you to stay.
Yeah, actually, we've covered everything on my report. You should have a copy of it. Probably talked about everything, so. That's just something new.
Now, the only thing new would be that we did receive the right-of-way plans for the bridge down here, replacement. If anyone wants to come and look at them.
Police report.
You have a copy of my report? We finished up our teen buckle-up grant on Sunday, was our last day on that. Everybody noticed quite a few extra police officers out. They were being paid by the state, too. And, uh, we'll have a buckle-up grant, too, probably next month, and then there's also going to be a, an aggressive driving grant that we're working on, too. I checked into that issue you had asked about last month, uh, Stanley, about the officer leaving the jurisdiction. That was a hit-and-run driver that, uh, or hit-and-run accident that, uh, an outside jurisdiction asked us to look for in the borough. And when the fire company went out, they, they motioned to our officer that that, that was the vehicle that had crashed just past the Quarter Mile Bridge. So he went out and waited there. The guy got out of the, uh, guy got out of the, uh, vehicle and took off running, so, but he stayed there until then.
That wasn't the Quarter Mile first?
Just, just past the Quarter Mile on the, uh...
On the ramp, it was the ramp from, uh, three twenty-two east to, to Amity Hall.
Right, right. Yeah, well, it's, yeah, out, out past Quarter Mile, but he, he was, uh, yeah, he was there, waited for the, uh, responding jurisdiction to get there, and then he, he had left. But I listened to the tape, I didn't hear anything about any, uh, handshake or, or anything like that. Okay, I listened to the tape, I didn't hear anything that was out of the norms or anything. And also the school zone, I checked into that, that was Captain Carlson that was sitting at the school zone that morning. Like I said, we have a lot of complaints about that, and especially when we sit going north, northbound. A lot of people use that center lane to pass people when they're, when the traffic, when the lights are going for fifteen mile an hour, traffic gets backed up. So they'll move in the center lane and pass everybody and go more than fifteen miles an hour to make the turn into school. If we sit there, they can't do that.
No, I, I understand why there.
Oh, okay.
Not stupid. But to me, it's stupid to have, you just said yourself that people got there passed. Duh, you're sitting there with no lights on, somebody pops you in the butt because they can't see you out there. I don't think it's your fault that they hit you, on the other hand, you would think with all the, the lights and headlights and four-ways and all your little lights you guys like to have, you think you'd use them if you're sitting in the middle of the highway in the fall.
Well, it, he claimed it...
I mean, that, that part doesn't make sense. It'd be like a fire truck, like this guy going to an accident, going down the highway, six mile an hour, no lights on. He would never do that. Because he wants people to see him that he is going somewhere, or, you know, he wants people to see him.
Well, he claimed he had the, the rear lights on flashing, the red and blue lights, so...
Uh, like I said, I had two different people, I had one phone call, one person seeing us, you know, one of the work and...
And when I sit there, I have, I have the brake light on, I mean, I have my foot on the brake when I'm, when I'm sitting there during traffic, so. And what we want to do is, we want to slow people down.
Understood, and when I, I tip, when I'm walking down the road and I see your headlights blinking, and I see blue lights blinking, I slow down. Because any lights you guys have, you can see two miles away. And I've seen them...
And they have flashing yellow lights, too, that say school down.
All them lights are all LEDs from the team going a mile away. One, one morning, I pulled out at forty-nine, I looked down past the back and I could see it looks, I mean, it looked like it was right there.
Yeah, we don't want people just to slow down when we're sitting there either, so, you know, they, they need, they need to respond to the flashing yellow lights that say fifteen miles an hour. That's why we, that's why we do that and why we're there. We're also looking into a cat grant, uh, to, uh, pick up these feral cats and have them spayed and neutered and then reintroduce them back to where they were picked up and event... And eventually that'll, that'll cut down on the cat population, both in Penn Township and the borough. Also, the burglaries, there were two burglaries in the Cove that we had. They have been solved. There were four individuals from Dauphin County that committed those burglaries along with several, I think, close to 20 burglaries in Perry County and Dauphin County and Lancaster County. It was, it wasn't anybody in the Cove that committed those burglaries. And they have been, those, both of those have been solved, so. And they're wait, now, they're gonna be prosecuted in Dauphin County, so we won't be billed for the prosecution or anything. We don't have to do anything up here. Everything will be transferred to Dauphin County.
How'd you end up catching a prosecutor, if I can handle?
Well, outside jurisdictions, the state police had picked, picked other ones up. And then, then once, once you pick them up, you find out what else they did. And that's, that's how, how we did it. They'll be charging them probably in the next three to four weeks. And it'll all take place down in Dauphin County.
You said they weren't from the Cove?
No, they were from Harrisburg, actually. There were four individuals from Harrisburg. And that's all I have.
Okay. One thing I missed on my highway report, and I talked to Chief Pickle about it, I had a complaint from down in the Cove, down there, coming down over the church hill where it joins the Cove Road. That's a heavy traffic area there with several farmers around there. They come down there and they pull out and there is a blind section there where they come around with the church. And they come flying down there and just about farmer on his tractor and his salvage wagon there. Little bit of sliding sideways, just about made the collision. So I took a look at that and I talked to him. And I forgot to mention that we're gonna order signs down there that shows farm implements and a T-intersection there. And with a slower, slower speed rate there through that intersection. So there was a request made for it and a serious complaint that almost turned into a pretty bad accident. And it is a very blind situation. It's been there with the church sitting there at the stop sign, looking back the Cove. So I will be getting those signs ordered and getting those up and put there. And hope that maybe we can stem that flow of traffic there without reducing a speed limit the whole way back to the Cove down to 20, 25 mile an hour.
We're gonna put a similar set of signs out on Schoolhouse there in that corner where we, that tree, somebody keeps trying to move that tree. It just never happens, so we're gonna do a similar situation there to warn them of the curve and to request a reduction in speed.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Just a question. When Paul was still here, when Paul Schaefer was still here, there was discussion about putting mobile cameras in the police vehicles. I know that the Charger, when it came to Penn Township, had a camera system in it. Does that still there and do the SUVs have cameras?
The SUVs don't and the Charger does. We're looking into, actually, a grant for that. The cameras are old technology. The new technology is Wi-Fi. So when they park here or even come close to the building, they would actually download all the video rather than physically have to take CDs in and out and stuff like that. So that's what we're looking at.
I knew it had been discussed. I couldn't remember before that happened.
Thank you. Henry, I have a question for Chief Pickle, also. You, you and I talked about the, have you made any headway with the iPads and anything with the county?
Yeah, I had a meeting last, last week. They're upgrading, well, the radio system, too. And right now, I guess they have I am Responding, I think, that you guys are using. And we're looking into, into possibly using that, too, with us, which is compatible with the iPads.
Yep. They didn't say anything about the linking the CAD with an iPad as opposed to when you have the laptop? You have the registration that actually goes with it. We get one of those, each minute, you get one of those free.
Yeah, right.
What is it, the MDT or whatever, the, you know? Yeah, you only get one and obviously you have three units and we have, you know, probably at least four or five that we would eventually put them in.
And they didn't, they, they didn't say anything about upgrading that.
I'm gonna bring that up the next county meeting in October here about, you know, obviously the two of us are looking at the iPads. You guys already have them.
We already have them, yeah.
We're getting two of them probably next month and we wanna see what we can do to link that with the county, just like they would a laptop.
Yeah, we looked into JNet, too, being able to run licenses and stuff like that through the iPad, too. And there, there's still one defense about that, just, they just don't wanna put the money to switch over yet, even though that's the upcoming technology, so.
We have the I am Responding, just to let the township know also.
Seems like it works pretty good.
Yeah, it works really well. We have, through the county now, we get, actually get text messages on our phones when we get a call. And if you have Verizon, you can link it and my phone sounds just like my pager. I really don't even need a pager anymore. Except that you're the voice and telling me what's going on. Gives you the address and everything through I am Responding.
And you can just touch the app and it'll actually then send that to the, to the county saying, who's all responding?
But goes, that just goes to our station?
It does?
It may be linked up there.
Yeah, at least the county said they have it, too.
Yeah.
Because Tom Bell gets it on his smartphone, too. He can see who all's responding. And then when you get to the station, they were talking about putting up some, I guess, some monitors in.
Yeah, we had old stuff in our firehouse and, you know, when we first got the system and when you get a call, you'd call in on your phone. And if you didn't sit, push any buttons, it had a default where you were going to the station or to the scene or whatever, and that would come up on the screen. But that, we have a 1990 computer that no longer, it doesn't work all the time. So we have to, you know, I mean, 1990 is ancient in the computer age, but, yeah, we're gonna upgrade that stuff, too, over the.
That way you can check if people are coming and you can wait a minute.
Guys went to firehouse, go get on the fire truck, they can see up on the screen who's coming or whatever.
It's great. Dan, those crews, I think you're using something similar, too.
Yeah. Well, you can do all that. You can do staffing and everything on there. It's pretty.
Yeah, it is. It is pretty nice, too.
Okay, we done with the police report. Any other questions? If not, let's move on to the correspondence.
Permit.
Permit report.
There's nothing major or unusual on the permit reports.
We had solicitor's report, okay, correspondence, Penn Township Planning Commission?
A Perry County Planning Commission.
Perry County, yes.
They gave you a copy of the changes made to the county subdivision land development ordinance. There's a PennDOT letter describing what we may have to get into as far as permitting our signage on bridges. And that they might be able to pay for those signage through liquid fuels.
Have you got notice of any of your reviews?
Not yet. But that's there. Let's see. PTR Industries, that letter from the gunmakers?
Jesse, we have it here. I just opened it up here, just to let you know, they moved to Horry County, H-O-R-R-Y County, South Carolina, and a small town of Einer. That's where they moved to. And they thanked us graciously in their letter.
PSAR, the State Animal Response Team is asking for donation. PennDOT letter about the Perry County Winter Partnership Meeting on October 3rd. That's in there and then let's see. And then there's a meeting for PAFPM, which is to do with FEMA. And issues with that. FEMA, FEMA. And that is on October 23rd, if you wish to go to that. That would cost us, oh, $60. And that's all the correspondence.
Helen, I'd like to offer there that I attended that last year to the PennDOT thing up here, the winter, winter meeting. And it was very, very poorly attended, which surprised me by over the county and all the townships. It was very informational, though, and you got to talk to a lot of PennDOT employees that interfaced with some of the things we do. And if I draw a breath for them, would you please be kind enough to make reservations because I'd like to go again?
Okay.
It costs nothing and we don't get a big dinner. Just a little coffee and that's it. But it is a very informative meeting for any questions you may wanna ask.
Okay, that's all my correspondence.
Okay, business, no business?
Newsletter will be mailed out the 30th. And that's, and there is the treasurer position.
Okay, the interviews were done and I regret that I couldn't make it that night, but they were done. There was a selection made from a lady that did have some experience. And all the comments regards to the interview, to the two that done the interviews and the secretary in regards, but it's time we try to get one on board.
Well, my, my recollection is that we offered the position to Julie. She has a hyphenated last name.
Schumaker Harvey, I think it is.
Schumaker Harvey. And she, although she didn't mention it in the interview, she responded that she could not accept the position for less than $13 per hour. We were offering 11.
66.
1166 per hour. The other individual that we interviewed, Byron admitted, did not have the skills that we were asking for. So it, we're left to either offer Ms. Schumaker Harvey what she's asking for or go to a temp agency and pay more for anybody that we would get from them or re-advertise for the position. And I think those are our three choices.
Okay. I had asked Helen, requiring the temp agencies to see what may be available there. And if we were to hire someone 1166, it means we owe them 1866. And so it's not, not, not the way to go. That being said, I concur with Brian. The lady has skills and has it up here. I would like to put it forward in a form of a motion that we bring her in here and offer the job and talk to her about the wage and other things and put her on a six-month probation period. Offer that as a form of a motion. We won't need to re-advertise. It's went on long enough. And she does have necessary bookkeeping skills to fall right in place.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made with the second. Thank you, Cece. Motion made with the second. All those in favor give their consent by saying no. Ayes have it, so order.
That's all my old business.
Okay, new business?
I do have one thing under old business. I think it would apply as old business. And I really hate to bring this up, but the ward property. Mid-Penn recycling property. It was my understanding on that original plan, that establishment was to have one entrance only, which was one state road, 1115. I noticed that, besides the fact that they've never put up the fencing or the gate or any other requirement that was required of them, they also have a gate on the east side of that property, or south side, whichever way you're looking at it, about halfway back through that property. Because I've seen it standing open, so they access that from the side. So once again, he's not followed through on any of the requirements or the conditions that were put on that plan and just continues to break his word further of things that were not to be done. So I wanted that brought to someone's attention to at least be checked out. Not that he will comply, but.
Can you say something, please? I thought this was supposed to be taken care of back in January, February of this year. Wasn't there letters sent then? Didn't Officer Pickles actually make his presence known about concerns of that property at that time?
Those concerns have been addressed and I guess if there's anybody at fault here, I failed to bring this up, so it was on the board tonight, to Solicitor Wagner. This question was asked before, where we're at. The courts of Perry County have this case, by golly, to deal with. We took the necessary action. He's not in compliance. And when they move on it, we'll get some action until then, Brian. We're.
Is he being cited for violations?
Yes, sir. He, yes, sir, he has been.
He's taking the monthly, daily fines, whatever it is?
No, not citation. He sued for not following up with the plans. And that was all filed. And Mr. Wagner reported on that right here at the township meeting. If that's done, that's in the hands of Perry County Court. We're waiting for that action to take place.
Thank you.
That's, that's where we're at with that. And I failed to bring that up, so. I didn't think they asked about it tonight, but I know there's people that's interested in it from month to month why it takes so long. But the wheels of justice do bloom, Bill, a little slow.
Wasn't he issued a cease and desist order?
Pardon?
Was he not issued a cease and desist order?
The injunction is what Henry was talking about, being up at the court.
That's right. Yes, he was issued that and that injunction is up there, Brian. We're waiting, we're waiting for them to, to take us to that point. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And if I don't forget it, I'll bring up the results of that or where we stand on that next month. I'll put that on the agenda. I know there's a lot of people interested. Every drive, time I drive by it, I got a big interest in it. Okay, thanks for bringing up Cece. Reminded me, I failed to follow up on that. Okay. We have, anything else, Helen?
Not under old.
Not under old business? We have one item under new business, budget.
Budget.
Okay.
Uh, we need to set a date. I'm asking not the 16th of October. And you will have, what I have for the budget, in your boxes no later than Friday.
Okay.
So, any day but the 16th or the 21st. Those are two meetings.
15th?
Yeah, that'd be fine with me.
Yeah, right. Not for here. Make that motion in. Cece, make that motion.
Make it for 15th.
Okay.
Time?
Tell me.
6:30.
6:30 is fine with me.
Okay, I'll advertise it.
What time?
6:30.
What was that, did I get it?
The 15th. That's all I have under new business.
I have one question under new business. Kim Leicher, the property right across from my place, I don't know what, 1,400 block state road. Does he have a permit to operate a business out of that location?
No.
He is operating a business out of that location.
Okay.
I was going to ask if he had applied for a sign permit because he got a very large sign.
He picked up the application. He has not brought the application back.
Well, the sign disappeared at 2:55 on Saturday, four days before our meeting. So I figured there was no sign permit. But they, they are conducting business over there. It's not all bulk business because I've seen pickup trucks leaving there with product. So it's not, I would assume it is not, big jobs leaving on dump trucks.
Okay.
And that's certainly not the business that his plan, which was only a sketch plan, never an approved plan. It's not the same as what he had initially presented.
No.
And the only thing that he had from the county was that for him to be able to put storage to, to stockpile stuff in there. Now he's upgrading the business out of it. So he did have met the requirements of the county for that.
For the ENS plan, yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Or an ENS.
Yes.
Something. I still have to write that letter. I still have to write that letter to the county.
Yeah, okay. You didn't get it done.
No, I didn't get it done.
What letter is that?
I had picked up on the same thing that you're picking up and I wanted a letter into the county and a response. Just exactly what I stood there if there was any changes before we go say something we didn't. If you remember, the other time, we were highly criticized and ostracized by him when he come in here. Because of that, he said he had a county permit and had everything from the county. And why didn't we come to him first to tell us that?
Yes.
Well, we went to the county to ask, and he had approval, there was nothing we could do about it.
He had approval for putting Phil in.
For putting Phil in. So this time, I picked up on it and asked Helen to get a letter out. Been pretty busy around here. She didn't give the letter out to the county. I wanted to follow up with that, see if there's been any changes or anything given out by the county before we move in the direction you're talking about.
Oh, there's changes.
Oh, yeah. Was there any granted by the county that we don't know of, anything different? That was my question. That's what he, that he, he brought up before. Why didn't we go see him first instead of sending a letter? But I want to see whether there's been any changes yet.
Yes, and see if he actually put in an ENS plan.
Yes.
Which he hadn't done the first time.
Be highly interested in that.
Yes, okay.
I'll be done tomorrow.
Okay, Helen, thank you. Okay?
That's all I have.
That concludes new business, old business, and the agenda for the evening. I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay, I will send this into Lenny anyway, about the business portion.
Okay, thank you.
You made a motion, did you?
I'll second that.
Okay. Second, all those in favor, say aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Oh. Excuse me. You don't have it on the agenda, Helen? And I was just thinking about it. I'd like to reopen the meeting.
Okay.
I have to reopen the meeting here, folks, if you want to stay a minute to hear what else we got. I'm sorry about that. I'd like to reopen a meeting for one other order of businesses. Not on the agenda, and that's the agenda. And that is the cable TV franchise.
Yes, we forgot it.
You've, it's not on there, and we're sitting here thinking about that, and there was a lot of discussion about that today.
Yes.
After the report that we had from Solicitor Wagner and back and forth with Cohen, and in regards to this, and not having received much response from the cable TV in front of that, and been an awful lot of work put in this to make sure that we're where we want to be with this thing. I would like to make a motion that the supervisors were given papers reviewed as to how the payments were required. Three different phases, by golly, not extreme amount of money for what we're going to recover. We were entitled to an awful lot of things here that have slipped through the cracks regarding this for many, many years. And I feel that the return is going to be great for the township on this, and therefore I would make a motion that we allow the Cohen Law Group that we were introduced to by a county program to follow up and pursue these ordinances that are necessary for the wireless and for the cable. There's a lot of those things that are available out there. It's just, even the fiber optics is being placed in a right-of-way in the township. Anytime it's been done in the past, township missed out on those monies. And we're entitled to them, and, and, but we have to have an ordinance to have them adopt. Anytime someone uses our right-of-way for placement of lines or et cetera, it's amazing to me to know that we're entitled to compensation from it, and all these years, that's been missed and passed. It was totally unknown to me. But the county did present that program that we went to and brought it to our attention. Us, Chief Pickles and Captain Carlson brought it up that we should be getting free internet. The other municipalities are. They, they declined that for us and et cetera. So, once again, I make the motion that we turn this over to them, for them to draft these ordinances. There are professionals at it. They've dealt with this, this very same thing in this area before. And I put that for a motion. What is the wish of the board?
I'll second that.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Due to the fact that I'm a part-time employee of one of the parties, I'm to avoid the potential for conflict of interest, I abstain.
Okay. Okay, we have one.
Just question with that.
Pardon?
The first payment. Do I have to pay that with payroll, or do I wait until the end of October?
Aye.
I think we need to notify them, Helen.
Okay, notify them first.
I think they're very flexible of what, where we're at with that. Motion made with a second. Ayes, we have one abstention. And thank you, Brian, for bringing that to attention. Make the phone call tomorrow. Now, that being the end of our business for the evening, I make a motion, we adjourn for the second time.
I'll second that, the second time.
Motion made with a second. All those in favor, say aye. Ayes have it, so ordered.